This is the April Board of Trustees meetings, even though today is May the 4th. But this is our April meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have participants on the phone. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. And we're going to go into executive session after the open session of the meeting to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, because doing so in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on our bargaining position of the board. And we're not going to reconvene after that executive session. To record attendance here in person, we have Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, Bella Gorman, Laura Burgess, and Rahul Porus. And on the phone, we have Jill Schaefer and Sami Sampa. I would like to appoint a timekeeper. Sarah's not here today. He couldn't make it. Does anybody want to volunteer to be a timekeeper? I think it's going to be Sarah. Roger will be our timekeeper today. Excellent. The first to go through the voting part of the agenda is the approval of the minutes from March 23rd, which should be part of your packet.
Row, if I could just remind you...
Yeah, and I will remind everybody, just like Mr. Finkel did, to speak to the microphone. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 23rd meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes. Sheila.
Second.
Second by Bella. So you want to call the roll, Sarah, since you have it there?
I've not been yet, so...
Do you want me to call it on the...
Well, look, is it better, Sarah's better for us to wait for...
Yeah, we can wait for it.
To make it easier.
We only have a couple of votes today.
Dawn is not coming?
No. You know that Nick said he couldn't make it either. And Sarah was out sick tonight. And Sarah does let her realize they skipped a public comment. Does anybody want to... Is there any public comment? Was there any request?
No.
No public comment in the room? To approve the minutes.
So Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Rahul Porus?
Abstained.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sampa?
Yes.
The motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is our budget review. So once a year, we're about to town review on the budget, then we get to vote for the next full year. So I'm going to turn it over to Roger and Leanna to review the budget.
So I'm going to pass the budget review on to Leanna to present the budget. This was approved in the Finance Committee meeting. The Finance Committee has recommended that the board approve the budget.
Leanna, why don't you sit over there and use one of those mics?
Is that my work?
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the 2024 AMSA operating budget that we are presenting to the board for a vote. So here are a few assumptions that were made when we were preparing this budget. This is for operations only. Tuition, the most probably important number on the budget, was calculated using the above foundation rate, assuming a flat rate based on the second quarter of 2023. The foundation rate assumed a 2.7% increase based on the 2023 percentage increase overall. And the facilities rate remained flat at 1,088 per student, times our 966 students. Salaries are projected based on a 3% cost of living increase for all faculty and staff. And I just wanted to note that this budget doesn't include any expenses related to the building purchase. So here is a brief snapshot of the budget. As you'll see, there is $17,777,000 in total revenue projected, and we'll go into the details of that in a minute. As for expenses, the biggest line item there is the salary and benefits. Total expenses, $17,462,000, leaving us with a projected surplus of $315,000 for the year. So a little more details on the revenue. Revenue consists of tuition, as I said, that's the biggest number, most important number. We're budgeting that at $16,111,000. And then other items that comprise the revenue are grants and donations, which exclude capital campaign funds. Those are recorded on the balance sheet, not on the profit and loss. Student programs, which includes field trips and clubs and things like that. Food services, athletics, rental income from our tenants, student transportation, and some miscellaneous other expenses. So total revenue again is $17,777,000 projected for next year. For the expenses, as I mentioned before, salaries, taxes, and benefits, that's the biggest expense that we have. That includes a reduction in full-time positions of 2.81. It includes a 3.9% increase in medical benefits and a 3% cost of living adjustment for teachers and staff. Other expenses that comprise the total: instructional supplies, professional development, student program expenses, food services, athletics, student transportation, facilities, and other operating costs, for a total expense of $17,462,000. This is a snapshot of the projected balance sheet at the end of FY '24. Important to note is we're expecting $21 million in cash, and that is due to us drawing down the rest of the loan. And fixed assets, you'll see, are $19,941. That is due to the construction of the project. And then you'll see long-term liabilities. We're going to be left with a mortgage of $25,200,000. And you'll see that the total assets are the same as the total liabilities and equity at the end of the year. A little bit small. This is our capital plan. So the biggest number on our capital plan for next year is the chiller that was already approved by the Board of Trustees, but we expect that to be an expense in the next fiscal year. So that's $313,000. We are looking to replace the flooring in 201 forestry at $80,000. And then the rest of these items are the normal computers and laptops and the lab refreshes that we do every single year, for a total of $750,000. And that's it. Any questions?
I have two questions. So you mentioned to the grants and donations that excluded the capital campaign. It was down a couple hundred thousand, though. I was just curious if we received a particularly big grant the prior year or it would make sense here the focus is on the capital campaign?
Well, it excludes the capital campaign funds. The big difference is the Esser money that came in during COVID. We were allowed to expend that over a period of three years, so we're winding that down in this next fiscal year.
Okay, yeah, so money, yeah, that doesn't continue on. And then was it the staffing costs? There was like a reduction. I was just curious, the reduction in full-time positions, 2.81, so there's a couple of positions, is that that won't be replaced?
Yeah, I can walk you through that. I figured that was going to come up as a question.
You were prepared.
I was. So it's actually a mix of adds and subtracts. We added a capital campaign director that wasn't technically in the budget last year, even though we hired her during this past fiscal year. And we're adding a paraprofessional. And then we have some deductions here, the Assistant Executive Director. There was an academic success coach that is no longer going to be. Two paraprofessionals and a 501/4 coordinator. And then we are adding a couple of teachers, a lower school science teacher, a history teacher, and we're deducting one math teacher.
Okay. And so are there any services that will be impacted by the 501/4 coordinator, the academic success coach?
No, they weren't.
Leaving or...
Yeah, no. They weren't technically here this year, so it's a change from last year's budget to this year's budget.
Okay, they haven't even... Okay, they haven't been here, okay.
I only have one question.
I have a...
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Sami.
I have... Perfect. I have a question for the capital plan. What does new rooftop unit 165 mean? And then I have a question about the projector upgrade.
So that was also... That was a rooftop unit that was also approved by the board this year. I'm sorry, I didn't bullet that. So that was approved in this school year's board meeting, but we're expecting that not to be installed until August, late July, August.
It's a rooftop unit there.
And the projector upgrade, sorry, go ahead. I have a question about the...
Just a little more detail. It was the rooftop unit on 199 where the current rooftop unit has been replaced.
Somebody asked about the projector upgrades. Was that your other question?
Yes, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure what... Should I ask my projector upgrade question then?
Yes.
Just a quick, I see with computer refreshes, for example, we will see yearly amounts of projector upgrades like that in that are we just doing them in two phases and then they're fall off for a bit? Or is this something we're going to expect yearly?
Yes, that is just like the lab refreshes. We update the projectors every year, a certain group of them.
Okay, thanks.
I only have one question, just to understand the statement you made about the capital campaign. So did you mean that it doesn't show up as revenue in the year, but it shows up in the balance sheet as cash or...
Yeah, so the capital campaign is recorded on the balance sheet, actually in the equity section, until it is released from the Board of Trustees. So once it's released, then it'll appear as revenue and expenses that relate to that, if that makes sense.
Okay. So if somebody makes a pledge that's receivable, then goes to equity, and then when it's released, that equity becomes revenue?
Yeah.
Okay, right. So the end, the balance sheet and the income statement should reconcile, but that explains.
Leanna, I just have one point. I think, just to remind everyone, that our loan repayment next year is going to be a little different than past years. Maybe you can just tell everyone what that is. Like, it's just more, it's going to be more because of...
Yes, the mortgage payment is... So starting in November timeframe, we're going to need to draw down the full amount of our loan. And then at that point, we will be paying principal and interest based on the full amount of the loan, which is substantially higher than what we're paying right now.
And I think if you go back to your first slide... I'm sorry, the second slide?
This one?
Yep. That facilities increase, is that loan repayment built into that number?
Yes.
That's why we see a 24% increase. Yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
It will be totally worth it. And I got to say, just for the scare we have with issues with the bank and whatnot, the fact that we'll be drawing down that this year, it's actually a positive to make sure that we're taking advantage of the terms that we have with that loan, which are very favorable. So we do want to complete the project to begin with, that's the first goal. But then also, yes, we'll be paying more on that loan because that's the time we have to use that money. So I know you guys know better than I do, but it's worth staying up on.
Right, and that our projected profit loss is smaller because of the fact that now we're paying back principal and interest starting next year.
Any other questions for finance or for Leanna? Now it's the vote to approve the budget. So I can make a motion to approve the budget and file a recommendation from finance for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second. More.
Taken by more. Do you want to roll the call, Sarah? Call the roll. I always say that backwards.
Call roll.
Call the roll.
All right.
Thank you.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Rahul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sampa?
Yes.
And the motion passes. So thank you to the Finance Committee for the diligence in that. And thank you, as always, Leanna, for being the lifeline below of the school, of keeping everything running. I know it's not easy, and for being one step ahead of us, as you just demonstrated. You even anticipated our questions. Thank you for all the hard work and getting this budget. Excellent. So the other vote we have is what I consider to be just an administrative one, also related to money. As you know, we moved a lot of funds to St. Mary's Greater Union, and as part of the process of opening the accounts, one of the requirements is that we need to say that the board has explicitly allowed for those accounts to be open, and there's certain language that they require. That language was attached to the packet. I don't have it in front of me, but it's basically what you would expect, that we as the Board of Trustees are authorizing the administration to manage those funds in that specific institution. And it says that we voted on it. So we couldn't sign that because we had a vote on it. So that's basically why we're having this vote here. You can read the full text in the packet, but unless you have any questions about that text or why we're voting, I think it's as simple as just accepting that language, which is pretty standard.
Make a motion to accept the language?
Yeah, it's too authorized.
There is a typo in there. You just want to make it up. We can approve it subject to a typo in section five.
And you can call it out if you know what it is.
It's just SMCU, not SMCU.
Oh, okay, so St. Mary's Greater, yes. Make sure that when we're referring to St. Mary's Greater Union, we're using the acronym SMCU. All right, so it's the motion to authorize St. Mary's Greater Union as the possessor of the AMSA funds with the language and the resolution with the edit that Jill just called out. So that's Roger's motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bella. Can you call the roll?
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Rahul Porus?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sampa?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next up, capital campaign on that.
Right. So very special thanks to Marcy, who sent me over some updated information. And so for some people, this might be old news, especially for those who have participated, but we had two parent copies held in April. There was a brief presentation that included details about the loop, the driving loop, and the new building, as well as a walking tour. We had around 30 participants at those two events and have gotten several referrals from people who were at those sessions, so thank you very much. We had our first house party in Maynor. There were 15 attendees. Dawn, Pella was able to go, and we received a lot of positive feedback from that. At the upcoming Science and Arts Night, there's going to be a campaign table, so people can stop and ask questions, kind of see progress, pass off referrals if you have any introductions to make. Let's see, Marcy has met with Chris O'Keefe to talk about board development, roles and responsibilities for the St. Eagle's, and how that all pertains to the work that we're doing together. We received another $5,000 from Avidia Bank, so special thanks to Avidia. We're going to be meeting, Roger and I are going to be meeting with Marcy to talk about sort of getting an endowment settled, what that looks like for AMSA. And then the last piece is that there's going to be the second issue of the Campaign Update Newsletter. It will come out before the end of the year, so people can go into summer with the latest information on the capital campaign.
Once the Science Night?
18.
18?
Thank you.
I always enjoy that. Try to make. Any questions for more? If not, today we have Ellen joining us remotely. I know that Padma is going to present the slides for her. Ellen, I guess we'll give Padma a second to bring up this.
I'm disconnecting this call.
Yep. And as soon as that comes up, I'll turn it over to Ellen now. Probably a brief update, but the floor is yours, Ellen, for your ED update.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I am going to present my ED report from day four. And this is kind of a combination of, you know, we didn't have our meeting in April because we had the National Anna Society program that evening. And if you're interested in watching any of that, I know Mike Siegel has posted the video. And that was a really very, very successful evening. Really enjoyed that night. So the overview of the report is we will just be talking about the NCAS and the AP schedule, give you a little bit of a building update, and talk a little bit about how to do our classrooms and a trail project that we have going on. The weather wasn't great this week, but we have had some really nice days, and the kids have taken advantage, and the teachers have taken advantage of that. And then we're going to talk about some upcoming events, because this is a very busy time of year for everyone at the school. So NCAS, we have lots of testing going on right now. Anything that's in blue with beige words and names, that's already passed. Sarah Snow is our NCAS master. I mean, she just runs this and gets everyone organized. And I keep him telling you what a puzzle it is. She spends hours and hours and evenings helping everyone ready for tests, and it runs so smoothly. And then when students aren't in school, if they miss it, they're absent, then she has to run makeup day fun. So it's a huge spring project for Sarah, and I definitely want to continue to make her work there. We do have three days coming up, and of course, the all-important 10th grade NCAS coming up on May 16th and 17th. And then the 8th graders and the 9th graders, they have science, with the 9th graders being biology, and they're always the first week in June. So as you can see, this started back on March 28th and 29th, the 10th grade PLA. And it goes all the way straight through to June 6th and 7th. So a busy time of year for Sarah. And also, it has, teachers end up having to shift for classrooms because students are working on this for blocks of time. And it is a deduction to the schedule. Once again, Sarah just has just a masterful job doing that work. We also have AP exams that started on Monday. And the beige, you can see those are the exams that have already taken place. Tomorrow, we have European History and Microeconomics. And I have the distinct pleasure, actually, of being one of the practice for the Microeconomics test, the three of us. And so we all were pitching in to try to help Kate get through these exams. Some of our kids take in Microeconomics, so it will be a lot to do that tomorrow afternoon. And then you can see we have the calculus exams coming up, English, Physics, and Biology, French, and Latin. So looking forward to all of that. And just those of you who maybe are new or listening in from Big Book, we actually get NCAS scores come to us. We get a first blue raw look at scores in August, but they're not, those scores are not released to families, and we can't release them until October. You'll see that as you get into the fall. And then for the AP scores, they get released typically mid to third week in July. And usually that is included in the August or September board reports, depending on timing. So we have a little bit of a building update that we have. Construction drawings, so as you know, we've had various stages of drawings that the architects have worked on. And so this is the third step, this is the construction drawing. And they are due from the architects on June 21st. I have been told that they are on schedule with all of that. In fact, we had a meeting today looking at doorknobs, toilets, bathroom fixtures, and some other types of hardware. And so they think really again, now the details, we're meeting next week to look at colors and bricks and things like that. So the details are happening. After the construction drawings, so about a week or two ago, they have to post in public newspapers and whatnot all the different subcontractor bids that we're going to be accepting. So things like plumbing and electrical and elevators and things like that. And so actually, those are all due in by tomorrow. Those will be reviewed by the team, and eventually subcontractors will be chosen. And that's how the final cost of the project actually all comes together. And we've talked about the fact that the board will be voting in August on that final number that we will finally get, and we need to determine, you know, if you're going to vote forward, if the cost is acceptable to you, or, you know, what next step might take place. We have already gone to the city of Marlboro, and we did a presentation there a couple weeks ago before April break. And we received back some of their comments. They came actually a little bit before vacation, the rest of them today. And everything's looking good, actually. Couple little tweaks that they need to make, and we will be then waiting for approval from the city of Marlboro. The Loop Road is what they're going to do. So our last day of school is June 21st. Once everyone submits on June 22nd, they will come in, WTRs will come in with all of their equipment and things that they're going to need to start setting up the break ground on the Loop Road. That process will begin on June 22nd, which will be very, very exciting. Let's talk a little bit more about the Loop Road. Just wanted you to take, this is a new picture that I've got, a new drawing. This is one that we presented to the city to show exactly how the Loop Road is going to connect. You can see with the blue arrow, for those of you who are familiar, actually, you can look right out the window of where you're sitting right now, but you see the current walking path. It's quite a significant hill, actually. And I thought originally, honestly, that they were going to just widen that. But that works out with the grading, and it's two seats. So what they actually will be doing is, as we've talked about, is creating that retaining wall off to the other side where the orange arrow is. And that Loop Road there, that connection, will connect the driveway behind 165, excuse me, to the parking lot, the static parking lot behind 199. excuse me, to the parking lot, the traffic parking lot behind 199. I'm going to show you another drawing that's going to show you how the route around the building, you're actually going to go with the cars. But I just thought this was kind of a nice close-up of the Loop Road and of the retaining wall. Anyone have any questions on that?
No.
Okay. All right. So hopefully, you can see this a little bit, but you'll be able to take a closer, a closer look at it when we publish my slides. So you can see, you all, you know where the 165 building is and how we are changing the way the traffic flows, the traffic pattern. So the pink line, dashed line, and solid line, those, that's where the parents will drive. And also, if you're a junior and you're going to park in the back lot, you'll also go in this way. But so we will have someone else directing traffic now. It will be at a different entrance. There'll be a new sign there that says AMSA. They are talking about what the sign is going to look like exactly now. But if you're a parent, you're going to follow that pink line, and you're going to have two rows of traffic coming in and up and around in the back. Now, if you are a high school parent who's dropping your child off at the 199 building, you're going to take the inner loop, and you're going to drop off right there at the high back of high school. And if you're someone who's actually dropping off over to the middle school, you'll take the upper pink line, and then both lanes of traffic will come down into the, by the lower school building, and we can have, we'll have a drop-off there as well. And then as they leave, they'll exit, actually, the same way they exit in the morning right now. You'll also notice the bus lanes. We are, the bus lanes right now is single lane, and it will be a double lane once they're done. And those buses, they're going to come in currently exactly the way they do right now. And this has to do with the traffic study that MDM performed, which tried to kind of spread out to have, make sure that the traffic is able to flow without getting stopped up. So one of the ways to do that is take the buses out of the full loop and have them come in the way they do now. They'll have two rows there of buses. We'll have adults there that will help offload and unload those buses in the afternoon. And then they make a quick turn right out of the school by the 165 building. Now, I'm not sure if you can see the drawing as close enough for you, but there's another area. And if you walk out by where the buses are now, where the senior parking lot is, you can see that there's something, well, sort of a little bit like tape cards, that is, that the buses have to go around. Now, in order to have those buses not interfere way into the parent's incoming lane, we're changing the shape of that just a little bit, so that there's a nice smooth way for the buses to come out and not interfere with incoming traffic as they head out. And the same thing with seniors. So seniors, seniors with the little blue line that's running close to the yellow line. The seniors will also come in at where they usually come in right now. And then that's their front parking lot there. If you've been on campus this year, you've seen that the seniors have seen to that. That would be a tradition that next year, seniors will do as well. But they'll come right in there, and they'll be able to pop in there in the morning. This obviously is going to change the number of adults out there, and the duties and all of that. And I know that Dan and Anthony, our deans, are already working on that. Any questions about what the traffic pattern will be looking, will look like? I would just add to this, that, you know, obviously, this is what the engineers, the traffic engineers have suggested after they've done multiple, you know, counts on the traffic and how it moves, and when it's busiest on campus, and when things lighten up. But this, you know, this could be something too that they tweak and change depending on how they actually flow once we get back in the fall.
Yeah. And Ellen, just to state the obvious, what this means is that all the spacing between the buildings is pedestrian, which means that after this is done, the students will be able to move between the buildings without stepping on a road.
Well, you know, the road is still going to be there because we don't have enough money to pull the road up.
Right. And then it's a connected road, I should say.
Yeah. The parking is still going to be there, but we're going to be sure that the people that are parking there are people that are staying all day. So there will be more staff parking there. And that's because until we can expand the parking, like, do you see where the senior student parking lot is way at the bottom of the picture? Eventually, that will add on to that parking lot, so it will be about the things that Vortix has. But until that is done, we can't afford to really lose that parking that's in the middle. But that parking won't be moving during the day, and the students should be able to move freely, and that will also be a pedestrian area. But there will be some staff that's parking there.
Ellen, where will the visitor parking move to? Because I think that's what a lot of that middle parking is now.
Yeah. The visitor parking lot is going to go in that new parking area that's going to be connected. The new front office is going to be in the new building. Because that's the building that you're really going to see that could be front and center. Could be, it's a lovely welcome area. So if a parent comes to, let's say, drop off lunch, they're going to follow the pink line all the way up back, and then they're going to take a turn into the new parking lot, and then they'll walk into the new building that way, and they'll hear a sessionary there. There's 30 spaces there. Any other questions on that?
Just to clarify a question, what, for next year, we don't have in the building yet, they would, the parents would still park, the visitor parking still right in the front area, and then they just walk around back to the current office?
Yeah, that's true. There is going to be some time, so that part, this new loop should be active and running for when you return to school. We probably will need to figure out exactly where some of that parking is going to be until that parking lot is built. But we will definitely, definitely figure that out. I mean, at that point, you're still going to have, really, I'll have to talk to Mike and Amanda about where they want to put that parking. There'll have to be other visitor parking, and I prefer that it not be, well, I will be there, so it doesn't really matter what I prefer. But I would rather not have a lot of cars moving in that area. I mean, the whole point was to not. But they will start digging that up right away at the very beginning of September. But perhaps at the top of that, where the dashed line is on the, on my left-hand side, we put visitor parking there, and then folks would have to walk over to Kathy McLaughlin in the lower school building or to Sandy, and have more stable parking in between the buildings until we get the temporary lot made. So still, you know, a working process. We're still evaluating especially exactly how things are going to work and parking for next year. But there is plenty of time for that. Any other questions on that? We do pick up parking spaces. There must be 15 more than there is currently. So we do pick up some parking, and hopefully, that's going to point enough. So we'll talk a little bit about outdoor classrooms and a trail project that's actually been working on for a long, long time. I will say that, you know, huge thank you to this project, Lisa Tebow, Kristy Jagowski, Mark Vidal's been working on this. And this is something else that's been a work for, oh gee, a year, year and a half at least. And so we're pretty excited. We're making some real progress. And there's also a number of students, this is going to be, this is part one of a two-part report, actually. There's more information about this that I'm going to give out to next month. And we'll talk about all the different students who have been involved. There's been a number of Eagle projects involved in this, and Girl Scouting projects as well. So I will get into more detail next month. But there was so much information, I thought I would split it into two. Well, first of all, we had some lovely days, not this week, prior to break, and just thought that this was terrific. I love seeing the staff taking our students outside. You can see on the top, that's Rick Rowe with a group of his math students. We have Mike Claris here. These are physics students. And then we have a couple pictures on either at bottom, and they're reading 1984, so these are our English students. And then the center bottom, that's Chris Brandis, and Chris also teaches sustainability in the high school and physics in the middle school. And so it's great on these beautiful days. You can see folks in shorts. The kids are just loving being outside. And I think he gave everyone hope that the good weather is around the corner. But that is just the beginning. But I did want you to know that, you know, we do utilize the outside. There are some other tables and a black, well, it's been a painted blackboard on one of the walls by the 165 building. And so we have been utilizing outside, especially since COVID, and, but we've got something special coming up, too. All right. So this is the AMSA Trail Project. And there's a map that Lisa Tebow is working on, hand drawn, at this point, we don't have architects working on this. But there's going to be a whole loop behind the 199 building, and it will eventually be long enough, once it's all connected, once it's all completed, to be a cross-country loop that the cross-country students and Mark Vidal will be able to use in the future. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done for that, and we're going to, we're going to review some of that. But we're going to talk about these specific parts, but they're creating kiosks and benches and classroom space outside, which has all been organized by Kristy Jagowski for, he has a whole timeout process so that teachers know when these spaces are open for them to teach. There's whiteboards out there and equipment. So one of the projects, it was an Eagle, no, it was not, it was a Girl Scout project, was to create these benches here that you can see. And these benches, they may not look like they're down deep, but they're down, I believe they're about 18 to 24 inches down and cemented in there. I sat on those myself. They're solid as rocks. They're beautiful. And there's a whiteboard area. You can see there's a little black mailbox there next to the whiteboard, and there's erasers in there and the whiteboard markers. On the other side, there's a pinboard, there's markings for, you know, watching for poison ID, and they did a lovely job also on that kiosk with identifying different plants and animals that the students might see while they're up there. So this is just one of the classrooms. There's going to be at least one more, possibly two more. And you can see in this other picture that the students are actually utilizing these benches, and you can see they have smiles on their faces. And it's just so nice to be outside. I know that Aaron Fuller has taught Latin out here. This is one of our science teachers that has this whiteboard. There's, I think it's just going to be terrific, and the kids are going to really enjoy it. I thought I had added one more set of pictures in there. But we'll talk more next week about this, and next month, excuse me, and we can, I'll show you some more pictures of it. There's a bridge that's already been made by one of the Eagle projects. There was a head marker that has the whole diagram, and once again, signage that tells the kids to watch out what the ticks look like and all of that, just like you'd see in a regular public park. Lots of hard gold has gone into putting this together, and really, it's just, it's just beginning. All right. And just, we have a few upcoming events. We have the Senior Award Night on May 23rd. All of you are invited to that, 6 o'clock at Best Western here in Marlborough. On the 18th, we, I'm sorry, I can't realize that without order. On the 18th, we have Arts and Science Night from 5 to 8. And that is all the artworks and the music, and that is a staggered start. So if you're interested, take a look at the website, and Mike Single has everything up there about what time you can hear all the different music and the bands and the chorus and all of that. May 19th is the junior senior prom, half-day school. The senior's last day of school is May 31st, and Mike Single, and, I'm, Mike Single, excuse me, Mike Knack, Ian Anderson Day, and the senior advisors have worked tirelessly to create a schedule to really help the seniors to celebrate their graduation and to make a wonderful memory. That information, I believe, is also, since it's on the website, I believe, as well. So you can take a look at that if you're curious. And then June 9th is the graduation class. The 20th graders get four kicks at 6 o'clock at the Friday evening. And June 21st is our last day of school, the half-day. My team and I have also put together an amazing seniors, not seniors, sorry, final schedule for the last several days of school, and that has been published up to families as well. Just to remind you about the AMSA golf tournament, and perhaps you've seen some information come home about this, but please, if you, if you play, you know, for someone, you know the people who play, please ask them to register. If you or someone that you know would like to sponsor the event, and they're also looking for a raffle and donation item that also can be dropped off to Kathy McLaughlin in the lower school office, and just label it as golf. And lastly, if you want to volunteer that day, they would love some help on this night as many wonderful hours at the golf tournament and helping out as best we can. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful, beautiful day. And then just, you know, a reminder to keep those reveres coming to Marcy, and to continue to share the good news of AMSA and all that we do with our students and the opportunities that we provide in to help us reach the goals that we have to continue to build out this campus over the next five to 10 years. It's going to take a lot of endurance, a lot of time, and a lot of real targeted efforts to be successful with the campaign. And so if you are able to make a donation yourself, but also to help out do referrals, we would be very grateful. Anyone have any questions on anything?
No questions, but I love the outdoor classroom space. That looks amazing, so that's really exciting to add.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that. I know it's so exciting. It's just absolutely beautiful. And I definitely walked down there a few times. It's just peaceful and beautiful. You can't hear 495, that is very true. But if you really just try to leave yourself in the area, you really can. There's two big ponds back there, one big one, one small one. And I think there's just years and years of wonderful experiences for our students out there. I mean, they can learn all kinds of things while they're there. So I'm glad that makes you happy. Beautiful.
Yeah. I'm going to add, not only that, but also the trails. It's another example of how much we do with what we have, which is near Worth Island.
Yeah, absolutely. And along on that trail, we've worked very closely with the city of Marlborough. It does come, you know, very close to, I believe it's Richard School that's behind us there. And that will be opened up, you know, on the weekend, once that trail is put in for folks within the city as well, as a collaborative effort. And we've worked with, there's a woman named Priscilla, and she is over the environmental committee in Marlborough, and a number of folks at the school have worked with her. So very, very exciting and really school-initiated, and all the blood, sweat, and tears has all been provided by folks inside the school, so I'm very grateful for all they've done.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Any other questions for Ellen? All right. Appreciate it. Thank you for joining us remotely, and it's always a great, exciting thing to see everything that's happening at the school.
Sure. I will be here first tonight. I'll just be listening, and if any questions come up, I will be right here.
All right. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, parent rep update.
Yeah. Well, sorry, unfortunately, I couldn't attend the family forum today. I was at a conference, so I don't know if any urgent questions were brought up there. But if there is a recording shared afterwards, I will definitely watch it. Um, but if there is a recording shared afterwards, I will definitely watch it. Um, uh, just a couple kind of thoughts, comments have come my way. Um, I think the good news is that parents are becoming more aware of the capital campaign and construction plans and things like that, because I've been hearing a lot more, um, conversations and questions about that. Um, along with that, I have heard questions as well as like, how are we paying for this? And, um, how is this all going to work or how are we fundraising? And I've been educating families about the wonderful addition of Marcy and that overall plan. Um, but hopefully, did you say another, or a newsletter is coming out?
There'll be another newsletter, campaign-specific newsletter.
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully that update will be good because it seems like that's where a lot of the questions are around is, is how we're paying for this. Um, and then the other kind of recent things that I've been hearing, and this could partly be, because again, I live more in the lower school world right now and I talk to a lot of those parents. Um, you know, there's a, there's a thing at the lower school, the advisories, um, where, I'm going to say, looking at Bella because yours, I would know it as well. It's their, um, room teacher.
DS.
Yeah, yes, DS teacher. Um, I think it's every eight days or every two weeks. There's different, um, sort of wellness, emotional wellbeing kind of topics that they're supposed to cover. And some parents have always said the intention behind it is good, but the execution runs into issues because some of these are sensitive topics for students, uh, depression, um, LGBTQ plus issues, things like that. And, you know, the people leading conversations about it are, are trained as teachers in certain subject matters, but not trained as facilitators to deal with some of these sensitive issues with the middle school students. So, you know, some parents have heard feedback from their students of interesting conversations that happened around some of these topics that they didn't think was either ideal about the topic or the best way to discuss it with middle school students. Um, so I think some parents would just love a little bit more review of that program. Um, and, you know, what's, what's the training that goes into, um, you know, when a teacher's going to lead discussion on these topics and things like that. And that's the bulk of what I've been hearing about lately.
Thank you. And I don't know, I'm assuming you're doing this, but just as a reminder, I think a good, that every time stuff like that comes up is a good reminder of the communication policy. So I hope that Ellen and Mike would agree with what I'm saying where the first line of communication and feedback should be the teacher. And, you know, that's the parish should hear those concerns and try to, you know, share their feedback that way because that, that's the first one. And then, you know, there's steps after that if they don't feel like it's been resolved or it hasn't been addressed after that. But I think it's good to remind parents of that because sometimes they're thinking about this and they're not, they don't take action or they think it's something that needs to be, you know, reevaluated before they can even try the first, the first level of addressing. So I know we've talked about it multiple times in the board, but I think it's a good reminder. I don't know, Ellen, if you want to add anything to that comment, but, or if you disagree, but.
Uh, yeah, Rob, I, I agree with what you said. Thanks very much. Um, if it's something exactly with, with Rob's, if it's something specific that happened during the digital conversation, yes, right, you, you can talk right to the teacher with concern. If it's about the curriculum itself or someone would like to take a look at it, that's actually, it's a, it's a curriculum we purchased. It's called Trails. Uh, and it is run through Kate Driver in the school counseling department and through the counselor. So if there's a question about the curriculum in and of itself, um, which I think actually is quite lovely, um, it's the curriculum itself. I'm not sure exactly how sometimes conversations, um, can happen spontaneously in a classroom setting with a lot of different students in there, but they should, uh, reach out to Kate.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments for Laura? Questions? All right. So we don't have SAC here in the room today, so I guess we're going to skip faculty updates. Unless any.
There is a.
Did you submit a?
Next week will be an election for the faculty. That's the only.
Oh, yes. So I, I had it in the, the, I guess for later, but both the parent rep and the faculty rep are annual positions. So our next, well, depends on what we talk about, well, how we're going to do the next board meeting. But in an annual board meeting, we accept the nominations for both of those, uh, positions. So the, the faculty chooses the faculty rep. And so there's an election and so we'll know the results of that. When's the election, Sarah?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. So we'll know, um, the results of that, we'll have a new faculty rep. Um, so I guess that is the faculty rep for now. And for the parent rep, it's the PTO and, yeah, Laura was asking about that. And I guess we'll connect with the PTO on, on that appointment. So you can come back for another year.
Sure.
But it's their, their choice. Excellent. So we move into, uh, chair business. So I'm going to start with fulfilling at least the beginning of a promise that I made to everybody, but particularly to Pat, that we were going to follow up on the strategic planning on a quarterly basis. So, um, it is a quarterly update for our strategic planning. And what I thought was helpful, because I think a lot of us thought that what we covered in that meeting was very helpful in clarifying our role as trustees and how we set goals and, and how does that compare with the administration goals. So I think some of that was helpful enough that it was worth sharing again and refreshing our, our memories about that. But also sharing, I'm going to assume it's a broader audience at a board meeting than, than it was in strategic planning meeting. And then a bit of an update on the goals that come from that, because one of the things I'm, I'm going to tell you in advance so you're not surprised. We're going to have homework to make sure that we capture those goals that we talked about back in January for next school year. So the homework for the committees will be to discuss those goals. So when we come back in the next board meeting, we can have the goals, um, already kind of captured and, and board on track and following through with that. Uh, but again, these are things I've already discussed in January, so I'm just sharing that. Uh, the first part of the discussion was about what's the difference between board goals and, and administration goals or the ED goals? Because the board sets the ED goals and, and tracks and, and works with the ED to accomplish those goals. But we also set goals for ourselves as a board. And there was a lot of discussion around that. And one of the most helpful things that, that from my perspective, discussions we had that day was, um, I mean, do you mind clicking on the TV so it doesn't turn off? Can, there you go. Thank you. So it was a helpful analogy on what the board does, which is governance, versus what the administration and the ED do, which is management. And the governance part is analogy was of having a boat. If you have a boat, you're in the middle of the ocean, the board is setting the direction of the boat, but it's not moving the tiller or setting, you know, deciding whether or not we're going to raise the sails or lower the sails or who's going to be sitting where and whatnot. And that's what management is, you know, actually running the boat and going in the direction that the board is saying. So that is really part of the governance part of our job is to set the direction without necessarily getting into the operational aspects of the school. So that was a helpful reminder. And one of the things, I think we lost it to you. One of the things that, um, that helped clarify that is that there is a bit of an overlap. So, and that was a very helpful discussion back in January when we said there are management goals that we set. And there, well, as a board, we set the, the board goals and, and we tell management, um, those goals. But then there's something that's kind of a bit of a, a gray line between the two. Let me see if I can fix them.
Okay.
Yeah, just saying, no. So, um, that bit of an overlap is something that we deal with on a regular basis? I think you got it.
No.
There. So, um, it was helpful to see something like this, which again was share what, and I should give credit. This was something that was a presentation by Gina Fafar from Board on Track, who was very helpful. Actually gave us more time than we were expecting that day. But if you think about what governance, meaning the board versus the management do, we're on the left side with oversight accountability and making sure we're answering to, to the state and to all regulators about what, what the school does and we're staying true to the charter. And the school is making sure that we're implementing and executing on those policies. There's that middle ground there, which is the kinds of things that we talk about all the time in the committees and, and these board meetings, which have to do with advocacy, fundraising, strategy and all, all these things. So there is a gray area. And that's why sometimes it's a little bit of back and forth when we're doing goal setting. But I do believe this conversation was very helpful back in January to help us define those goals that, that we're going to talk about right now. So again, I just wanted to refresh our memories on this because I think it's a good guideline for, uh, these goals. And then the other concept that generated a lot of discussion and also think was helpful is the level of specificity that we define for long-term goals. Because you remember strategic planning is about the long-term perspective, but then short-term targets. And that terminology was something that I think we're going to start adopting when we talk about goals versus target. So what we're trying to come up for next school year are, are targets that are SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, uh, what's the R? Forget the R, but, um, and timeout, but, uh, realistic and, and timeout. So those goals are, or I should say those targets are what we're trying to define coming out of, of this into our next board meeting. So this distinction of goal versus target, I think, was something that we weren't thinking about. And it's helpful because we can set a high-level goal, like saying we want to build a, um, you know, capital campaign. That's great. Let's be more specific about that. What are our targets for? You know, are we going to start with defining goal, you know, how much money we're going to raise? So we're going to start by saying we're going to hire a development director, which we did, right? So those are targets that feed into that bigger goal. So again, we already talked about this. It was a bit of a refresh, but I, I thought it was worth sharing. And then the third thing that we did, if you remember, we were actually right in this room and we decided we were going to focus on three things because it made it easier. We started with a longer list from previous strategic planning sessions, but we boiled it down to three areas that we wanted to make our strategic plan around. And those three areas, these were the names that we kind of agreed at the end of the discussion was resources, which has a lot to do with development and fundraising and all the things that the board can do to bring to, uh, increase and diversify those resources. The second one is, and we try to make this very tight to our mission, is the celebration of knowledge. And a lot of this is about teachers and the things that the board can do to improve and attract and, and maintain and retain teachers. And the third one was more about ourselves, the board, you know, what can we do to improve what we do as a board? So hopefully this is all familiar to all of you that were there. So here are the things, if you remember, and just for everybody listening, what we did is that we had discussions around those three areas and then we wrote down potential goals around that. And then at the end, everybody kind of voted on the top two or three. So this is actually the short list that this is what goes down to the committees. And if you remember, one of the things that I got for to do is to tie those back to the committees. So this is part of the homework. So if you disagree that this falls into that committee, let me know before we walk out of here today because that is going to be the homework. Each of the committees are going to look into these goals and turn them into targets for the next school year. So just real quickly, I'm not going to rehash all this, but, you know, for the resources side, we said we want long-term financial goals and a multi-year plan. I know finance has been working on that and there's a lot of work already done around that. But it's something that could be one of those short-term things for finance. Um, and that ties into a fundraising plan, which I know the board and the managing campaign have been working on as well. But tied to other things that were discussed that day, like a marketing plan and budget and, you know, specific targets for, for the first year. So that was on the resources side. The celebration of knowledge, like I said, was very focused on teacher and staff long, long-term retention. Um, just to explain the left one, which I didn't, uh, the S D L T is short-term versus long-term. So we try to make a bit of a distinction between things that will make it into the short-term plans and turn into targets for next school year. And there may be some of these things that are more, uh, medium-term, like two to three years. For example, we said, well, one of our goals, we want to develop a plan for long-term retention and attraction of content-centered teachers. And there was a lot of discussion about what that meant. Uh, I wasn't actually clear if that's something, because what's, what it all comes down to is resources, which we already talked about. So it might be an education committee goal, but it also, you could argue it's something that to retain teachers, we need to pay better. And then if we need to pay better, we need resources for that. So they're all kind of tied to each other. But at least from the concept of defining what a content-centered teacher is or, you know, how do we want to attract them other than with money, that could be an education committee, uh, focus. Obviously, we have the short-term, the union contract and, you know, I guess now we should call it a plural. But the, that's really a task force, uh, target for, for this year is the union negotiation task force. And then there's an annual conversation we're having about the, the fundraising part of getting to salary parity, which is something we talked about in previous years. Uh, but we actually were more specific and this is where this conversation was helpful. We said, yes, we obviously want to work towards that. We also have a big capital campaign which is focused on the building. But we could use some research that's going to help us build a stronger plan. And that's where kind of we, there were some specific ideas about understanding what's the opportunity cost of this and doing some analysis around that. That kind of falls between development and our committees, so I, you know, I'll leave it up for a discussion about where we put that. So we can come back to that. And then just to finish up on that, the third category was all about the board. So governance has already done a lot of these things, but I think it's worth keeping that in our, in our short-term targets. And how do we help with, or the orientation of the new board members, training existing board members and recruitment, which is the third one, which are all things that are ongoing all the time. It doesn't matter, you know, how, how much long-term board members stay on the board. There's always going to be some, particularly because of terms. We always need to be finding new board members and updating the profile of the board members that we want to attract. But also how do we prepare and enhance the capability of our existing board members to do our job? So that was the first one, you know, orientation and training, which again, governance has already done a lot about that. The other thing we talked a lot about is communication. Because I think we, we saw a lot of feedback saying that people, for the most part, knows the board exists, but doesn't know exactly what the board does. And we were trying to, and there was some discussion about, you know, what about even the parent rep role? And I think we got some good feedback from a consultant about how to draw the lines, how to actually run that. But that I also think could be something to focus on. And again, was something that was on the board that, that day about document sharing, communication and what are the kinds of things we can do to improve how people perceive the board. So these are mostly governance, but I will definitely, uh, could be something that we work on together. I will take a short breath, but I am going to bring this up just so everybody knows it exists. We talked about building a strategy on a page document, which is basically the summarization and the one place to keep up data on an ongoing basis about the output of strategic planning. And not to drain this, because it would take a long time to explain all the different pieces of this, but this is basically capturing all the things that we did and then hopefully we can come back and revisit this by making sure we understand our mission, our core values and that those targets and shorter, medium-term goals are captured in the middle. And then some of the other areas on the sides are things that we can still work on, like the performance indicators and, you know, what do we want to make sure we're preserving the school and whatnot. So I think we all agree that this was a good way to capture the progress that we make on this strategic plan to make sure we don't forget this, because this is not a static document and it's not even complete as of now. So this is the kind of thing that I will keep bringing back when, when we review this. Uh, one of the things you see on the bottom right is implementation. How are you going to make strategy a habit? How do we want to make sure we don't forget? Because this is long-term thinking. The day-to-day gets in the middle of thinking this way. So we need to force ourselves to think this way, which is why we're here in May talking about something within January, right? So at the very least, I can answer one question, you know, how are we going to have a cadence about this? We said we're going to do this quarterly. So this is the first time we do this. You know, next one, based on the, uh, board schedule, we're scheduling to do this again in October. Doesn't mean that we don't think about this between, on October. It just means that we're going to keep bringing this up and hopefully every time we do, we have a little bit more, um, you know, this picture is a little bit more full. So here's the next step that I'm proposing. We can definitely discuss different approaches. But those target, those goals that I shared earlier by committee should be discussed in the committees. And they should become targets for the next school year, which in our next board meeting, I would assume every committee will meet between now and the next board meeting. And then in the next board meeting, we will say these are goals or approve those goals. We'll track them on Board on Track, which is something that we have been doing consistently and we think is a good idea. And then we'll set those up by the end of the school year, so by June. So come July, we know what each committee goals tied to the strategic plan are. Sounds like a very simple thing, but I'm sure it's going to require a lot of work between now and then within the committees. So any reactions to that homework? I know people love getting homework, but.
I think that's a very aggressive schedule.
Okay. Now, just to be clear, we're not starting from scratch.
No, but to say.
No, but to say, to have a discussion in the committee and define what our goal is for next year before early June. Typically, the committees will have one committee meeting, which there are other things, especially if they get finance, have other things that we need to discuss. So I'm worried that, I'm worried that given in one hour, would the committees be able to have the necessary discussion, be able to create the goals for next year?
So we can start the year and then vote on the goals in the first meeting of the year. We've done it before, so it's not like we have to wait until we have goals to start the year.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
If you are planning for 23, 24, I think it is, I like your idea about doing it now so that even though it doesn't take, takes a little bit of time right now, but it will help the rest of the committees to follow through on plan for the next year so that when the strategic meeting comes back again, you're not repeating the same thing over and over again. So there will be some targets that we can come up with and start working towards it and then see, measure the success at that point. Rather than just saying, I know there are priorities, but we have to prioritize this too. Or else we're going to drive what always.
Yeah, no, it's just that I completely agree with Padmaja. I mean, I think some of the fundraising, some of the development committee goals are easy enough for us to tackle next week in terms of getting the ball rolling. Fundraising goals, we've got a capital campaign going on, right? So we already discussed as a committee, our goal. We have different dollar amounts and different sort of priorities in that regard. But I just think in terms of coming up with a marketing strategy, these are things that we've been discussing. So from my perspective, I'm kind of excited to put some targets together. Targets again, like yes, we use all the data we have. But I think that when it comes to these committees setting goals, sometimes when we haven't necessarily set targets or goals specifically for a while, just set something, right? Like give us a point based on what we've talked about, the data that we do have. Because I mean, I think all of us can probably agree with different experience of committees and boards. Like we can all talk in circles about goals. But I think until we just pick something to go for, we don't go anywhere.
The idea of the targets was to make a small step towards the goal. Because you might feel like, well, that's not that much progress. Why would we want to talk about something small? It's like, well, but it's progress, right? The alternative is just thinking about this, oh yeah, we're going to get to China, but I don't know if I'm going to go east or west. At least you're getting started towards that goal. I appreciate the feedback, Roger. So I guess I'll put it as a challenge. If, we've done it before, right? We said we're going to put things on board on track and whether or not that has happened. I guess it's up for each committee to prioritize it in a way it's practical. I think finance has already been doing a lot of that for the specific things that we talked about, like the plan and the decision for the building project or whatnot, that's already there. You're looking like you want to say something.
No, I agree with Padmaja and Maura. And Roger, I know we have a lot going on, but I think baby steps. I think putting pen to paper and just doing even some small things, like for example, we've been talking about putting a framework together with Leona about what information does the board need to even make the decision to move forward with the construction project? Is a goal that we, that is a goal that we have to get done. We can put that on a piece of paper. That is a goal that needs to happen. So that when we do go forward to try and make this decision, everyone has the information in front of them on whether they can, whether moving forward.
And it could be a self-serving goal. Can I say, I'm thinking of this just because of my professional life, where goals could be things that, hey, my life would be easier if this was in place. So it's not a surprise, right? So again, each committee will have to figure out what that means. I do think, if I remember the sentiment, what we wrapped up this session back in January was having a framework like this will help us stay honest and accountable for going back to this. So whether we do it in three months or four months, it's still the same baby steps. I think I like that term. Take baby steps to make sure that the big important things. Which is, by the way, the other thing that was a key takeaway from that day, everything should be tested against the mission. So if we cannot trace it back to the mission, why are we doing it? And that really was, it sounds obvious. It's hard to think about that when you're in the middle of, let's put pen to paper like you said.
Also, if you don't test for it, you will not know what the outcome is going to be and what are the things we need to fix.
Exactly. So if you don't know where you're going, you might end up in a bad place. All right, so hopefully, that was helpful. And I'm sorry for giving people homework, but I think as teachers know, there's a purpose for homework. So we hope that it will help us become better at our gallant as board members and provide in that direction for the school. Any other comments? All right. That was the strategic planning update. Again, it's going to come back again. We'll talk next board meeting. The other one was a family and staff survey update. So Dawn's not here, but she's been leading that task force. As you may have seen, the surveys went out last week, I believe. So if you're listening to this and you haven't responded, take a look. It's very similar to last year and we made it simpler. So it shouldn't be that hard to go through the surveys. I'm expecting a lot of feedback this year, so I'm looking forward to it. And so next steps and expectations. It takes a while to gather the comments and filter them. So sometimes we look through and review in the board meeting the results, the quantitative results before we talk about the comments. So we may or may not do that, but just expect an update in the next upcoming meeting. Not necessarily the next meeting, but in an upcoming meeting as we collect the feedback.
Do you know when the survey closes?
Not off the top of my head. Is it a couple of weeks?
It already came out, the staff survey just went out. And there were reminders that are going out frequently too. I already got two reminders.
So if I remember from what we did in the past, which I'm not sure how different it will be this year, it's a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Since it starts till it ends. So if it went out last week, it may be the end of this week or the end of next week. But that's just a guess. I don't know, Ellen, if you're listening, if you know off the top of your head. That's usually what happens. So if you haven't responded, please do. Excellent. So moving on to...
I'm here, I'm here, I will, but it's pretty muted on what the conversation is around.
Oh, sorry. The question was when the surveys, what's the deadline for the, when the surveys were going to close? And I know they were sent out last week. I just don't know off the top of my head.
The first one ran out April 27.
Okay.
Yeah, I know Lynn McCuskey is working on that right now. Obviously, we're working on the potential strike and she's spending a lot of time on that. But yeah, when we go talk to the survey, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Now, the question was just the deadline, how long it was going to be open for, but...
I don't have the exact, the exact date.
The event is May 7, 2023.
Okay, so this week, so this Friday. Okay, excellent. Thank you. No, this Friday, Sunday, Sunday.
It closes?
Yeah.
So you have the weekend to go to the survey.
Yeah, I don't know. One, I can't find mine. I don't know, families have gotten a reminder either.
I did, yeah, I did get, you know...
Yes, I've seen multiple reminders for the survey in my email.
So can you find yours?
It comes from Panorama.
It comes from Panorama. It might have gone to the spam folder, so people have to send that out. Like that might be, that message might, should go out probably. So it's a spam folder for Panorama because Panorama tries to send others out too.
I just have, when I search Panorama, I have an email on April 25 saying, hey, a survey is coming out, but I haven't received any survey.
Yeah, it says on April 27, you will receive an email from Panorama with a link to an anonymous survey. I never got it.
I will say that Paramount didn't come and I've gotten it before, straight to my inbox.
So there's a...
The character is like, it says Panorama Education Support plus...
I just searched it on my inbox and I didn't see it.
So we'll look into that. I did receive one that the time, the subject was request for feedback. And then it has a link to it. So but we'll double check to make sure that they go out. If there are any issues, then we'll let them know.
Yeah, no, I have it from last year. I have it from 2022, but not from 2023.
I got mine in May.
Lynn McCuskey just has that go out several times. So I'll post it her tomorrow, let her know. I know the staff got theirs. I saw it coming to ours in boxes. But perhaps it got a little glitchy on the parent side, but I'll ask Lynn to follow up and resend it.
Okay. Would there be a possibility, because some parents who haven't received it at all, if it's set to close on Sunday, that doesn't leave...
Yeah, we probably should extend it to the house. So I'll reach out to Lynn. Ellen, we can talk about that. I'll copy. No, but thanks for checking because otherwise we wouldn't know. I did receive mine, so I assumed everything was fine.
I'm the same as you, yeah.
Good to know. All right, committee reports. Start with finance.
One second, hold on. You're going to talk about the meetings that combine June and May?
Yes, I had that in the agenda later, but I can do it now. So Sarah had suggested that we have the annual meeting. And we're meeting now in May for the April meeting. But the question, I guess, is can we combine, should we combine the May and June meetings and then meet early in June? Is that, were you saying Sarah, I got that correctly? Yes. So how do people feel about that? And is that, do we need two meetings between now and the end of the year? Or do we combine them and meet early June?
When we say early June, what date are we talking to?
I guess we can be flexible if that makes a difference for your availability, but... Do we get the 5th?
It could be the 1st, the 2nd, Thursday in June.
So either the 8th or the 15th. Well, I guess the first, yeah, the first Thursday is the first, but yes.
So instead of having a meeting on May 25, you could combine it and have it on, yeah, the 1st, the 8th, or the 15th.
So it's to deal with one question at a time. I'm not here in big opposition to combining them. We'll combine them. And another question is the 1st, the 8th, or the 15th. And we don't have to answer it now, just if you have a quick answer, then we can go with that. If not...
Part of me wants to say the 1st.
I want to say the 1st as well.
Just graduation is the night.
That's a good point.
Gets a little busy for some of them. They're not doing the day before graduation.
All right, here's the next question. In person or remote? I heard remote. I think it came from the... Remote?
I'm fine either.
Okay, so June 1st, remote. That will be our annual meeting. And, well, anyway, we'll have the agenda that we normally have in an annual meeting. I'm not even going to try to remember what's in the agenda. Thank you for reminding me. I had it later in the agenda, but that's perfectly fine to do it now.
I have a little quick question. Are there votes, are there votes that we need to take beyond? Clearly, we have the election votes for parent rep and teacher rep. Are there project-related votes that we'll need to schedule? And is June 1st going to fit that?
Sarah, I'm here with a question, Ellen. Is the...
Yeah. Yes, I did, I heard it. Sarah is probably the expert on this. But we will definitely have the teacher rep tied up. But if you're concerned about PTO rep, maybe Laura knows the timing on that. Or you could go to the 15th if you don't...
No, the question was more about the project. Were the big, any votes needed for the...
Oh, the project. I thought you said about the two people coming in. No, the project, we know votes that you'll need to do until we get all those bids back.
And we can always have a special board meeting.
Yeah, we always have a special board meeting if something comes up. And I just want to make sure that we wouldn't, that the date fits our needed votes.
There's no known meeting that's to happen prior to the big vote for August. But as I mentioned earlier about this, July, the end of July meeting is a very important meeting because that's when Sarah needs to have the annual report approved and the SOA plan and those types of things. So that July meeting is important. The June one, I think the importance of that is to make sure we have the PTO rep and the teacher rep in place. Also, I think Nick will be rotating on, so we'll want to thank him for his service at that point as well. But I don't think there's anything else that's needed.
All right, so June 1st, remote. Finance, finance committee update. Beyond the budget, what have we just voted on?
So our recent meetings have been, the vote of the budget going forward. We have the, clearly, we have the huge, we have the big decision regarding the building project. We're preparing for that, for the August decision for that. We also are looking at implementing or modifying as needed. Implementing our investment policy or modifying the policy and implementing that. And we met, we had a productive meeting. I still, just today, with First Citizens and understood some more of the parameters around the project. That was a very productive meeting.
Any questions for Roger Ravello or Gena? Thank you. Now, Roger's still head committee.
Education committee, we met this week, discussed the results. Had Mike present the results from the HLL Success Survey, initial results. And we'll be meeting again this month as opposed to June.
Any questions? Governance.
So governance did meet. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend that. So I don't know if there's, I know Jill's on the line. I don't know if there's any update that anyone else wants to give. I'm just not comfortable giving updates.
Jill, you want to give me a show? Maybe your memory is better than mine.
Yeah, we discussed potential new board members. Peter Vassilopoulos. We, it's really, we skipped over most of the stuff, kind of stuff that we need to review to wait for Sheila to put. We discussed the need to review executive session minutes. I think we're doing that five annually, every two, every different ones. And I think that was it. Roger, do you have anything else?
Right, well, yeah, I'm trying to think. Yeah, I think that was pretty much it. We did talk about, you know, board terms and the fact that we need to, as always, need to recruit more board members and the profile of that. But like you said, Peter, hopefully, he's listening to it. And Ellen, see, I did talk, this is more of an update. After the governance board meeting, I did talk to an alum that is interesting. I thank you, Padmaja, for the recommendation. I always say that every time I meet an EBS student, I'm impressed, and this is no exception. Evan, I'm not going to, can you say the last name?
Prisowski.
Prisowski. Paul, just Evan, if you...
I might have butchered it too, but that's what I could do.
He is a graduate of the class 2016, if I'm not mistaken. 17?
16.
16? And works in cybersecurity. And he says that he has a passion for teaching, which is, I guess, a good part of the profile of coming and giving back to the school. But I told him, I don't think I'm wrong in saying... But I told him, I don't think I'm wrong in saying that it would be the first graduate board member, which is one of the things that we had set in governance, that we were trying to, you know, now that the school has been around for a while, it makes more sense to have, you know, graduates come back in that capacity. So he's very interested, he sounded excited. So I encourage, so the normal recruitment process, the governance committee takes on the role of nominating committee as well. So what we discussed in governance, basically, we talked more about Peter that day, but you know, we shared his resume and his information with the committee. And then everybody in the committee is encouraged to reach out directly and talk to the candidates. But if anybody else on the committee wants to do that as well, you know, ask me, let me know, and then I'll introduce you or, you know, with either of the candidates. They're both very excited, so I guess that's, Peter, well, there was some discussion about Peter Backsler, the parent of Brian Backsler, who was a teacher in the school. One of the parts of the discussion is, is that a conflict of interest? Is that okay? And as long as Peter recuses himself from any vote or discussion around negotiation or specific decisions having to do with teachers, it is okay. So that's, we actually brought that forward. Is anybody uncomfortable with that? If there's anybody that has any issues with that, feel free to speak up. But that actually, Peter highlighted, not only is he a parent of a teacher, is he a parent of a graduate, because Brian was part of the Alpha Class at Emsa. So it's a very unique perspective, having the history of the school since the first class, and obviously coming back and participating as a teacher. I do think that's a unique perspective, that it's worth.
He was also on the governance board first, other, like, the Special Olympics.
And actually, he couldn't make this board meeting because he is at that board. And he's a risk officer at a bank, so you know, he's familiar with governance and that kind of stuff. And more dynamics to it, which I think could be helpful as well. So I, yeah, I may be forgetting other details about governance, but you'll have our, our minutes to refer to if you miss anything. Is there anything else from development, Maura, that you wanted? Was the capital campaign covered it all?
Capital campaign covered it. We are down to, while the capital campaign is kind of getting up to speed, we're meeting quarterly. So our next meeting is coming Tuesday.
And I believe that's it for the agenda. So the next on the agenda is a vote to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board. And the board will not reconvene after this to adhere a motion to go into executive session.
Anyone else joining us?
Is anyone else joining us, Roger? No.
What is the motion?
Motion by Maura?
Second.
Second by Bella. Ready, Sarah? Call the roll, roll the call.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burge?
Yes.
Laura Fluster?
I have a participant is now answering.
Raoul Porras?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Shirley Kelly?
Yes.
Sami Nisampan?
Yes.
And that's it.
The motion passes. Thanks, everybody that tuned in, thank everybody in the room. See you again in June.